All the meeting to order at 7:03. Rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think it's really interesting how the law goes down, you know, your God part.
Regarding the agenda, I would like to get a motion to approve the agenda with the following We would, we're going to move executive session just prior to the committee reports. And our student representative is at the soccer game, and so is Dave, because his daughter is playing. So we're going to just, if it's okay when, what's her name?
Addie.
When Addie gets here, we're going to finish up whatever we're doing, and then we're going to let her go. Okay?
It's exciting when we got a student.
Yeah, very exciting.
So I'll make a motion to accept the agenda with those changes.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Do we have any members? Everybody's here in person so far. Okay. Okay, Sean, you were, public input? Do we have any public input? Rebecca, anybody sign up? No? Okay.
Not that I know of, no.
Okay, thank you. So we have no discussion of public input? Okay, approval?
I have a constituent's concern. Would that be under public input?
Have they, well, how do we handle that? Do they usually submit a letter? Did they put it in writing? And you have the name of the person?
Yeah, I have the name of the person.
Okay.
It was Norm Flanders.
Okay.
He said he had a concern about the one-way traffic around Clarendon Elementary. He thought there should be additional signage coming in from 7B, because people are ignoring that sign, apparently, and it creates safety problems, in his opinion.
So they're coming in off of 7B, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and it's, I think there's a small sign there or something. He thought additional signage would be helpful to remind people. I don't know who takes care of that, or if it's something, I'm speaking as one person for a constituent, and I don't know how you handle that.
I can bring that to Tim's attention.
Okay, thank you.
And let him make the decision.
Okay.
Or if it's off the state, off the town road, then maybe the town would have to do the signage, so, yeah, so Tim can follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any comments based on Dave's input? I haven't noticed that, but, okay. Approval of the minutes from 9:3. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Removed.
A second?
I'll.
Okay, did anybody have any changes? They look okay? Everybody happy? Okay?
Just, I mean, there's one moment here responding to public, and it says, Jody Stewart-Ruck apologizes. And I was just wondering, I know she's not here right now, it almost felt like personal as opposed to issued an apology, or something, you know, because, it almost sounded like it was...
She was the one.
But, you know, if she has no objection, I have no objection, I just thought, I would point that out, the wording was awkward, I think.
Oh, okay. Rebecca, will you change that to issued an apology?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, so we'll make that change. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, so we're going to jump to Sean.
All right. Hello, folks. If we haven't met before, my name's Sean Robinson, the principal of Mill River. This is my second year at Mill River. Things you should know about me, I tend to talk a little fast, so I apologize. Carol just nodded her head up and down. So I want to run through just information about Mill River, if things particularly you might not know, which is what I go for. If you're not getting our weekly newsletters, you're missing some stuff. Facebook's another great place. We try to kind of overlap most of it, but when I come to do presentations, I try to give you stuff maybe you haven't heard or wouldn't know if I weren't sitting here. So I'm going to run through some stuff. Typically, for Mill River, we often will do department presentations for the rest of the year, so I've got a couple of updates from a couple of departments, then they will come to do part of their kind of presentation related to them in the future, as we kind of have Mill River dates, and typically what I'll do is tag on a 10-minute kind of blurb about the high school, just as a heads-up there. If you know nothing else, it is a really good time to be a Minuteman, which is great. That has not always been the case, it has not always been the universal feeling, but things are going really good. Things I'd like you to know, recapping from 2425, just as a heads-up, this is last school year, we saw a decrease in behavior across all tiers of about 40%. We saw a decrease in behaviors leading to suspension of 50%. I would attribute those to two places really specifically. We have a deeply internally consistent assistant principal who does great work, and we were able to bring in a full-time behavior interventionist. Hard stop, those are the big differences there. All the members of class of 2025 graduated. I would say that is a product of a whole lot of people, not the least of which was the addition of an alternative education program to Mill River last year. We were able to get kids who otherwise wouldn't have been successful in a traditional classroom across the finish line. The year before that, I don't have the exact number, but I believe somewhere between eight or nine students dropped out right before graduation. And so we're building a system with your support transparently, because you've supported our additions of people and getting people in the right places to help our students be successful when they wouldn't have before. You know, a couple of other just kind of items there, 42 kids took AP courses. If you didn't know, I unapologetically tell people we have the best music program in the state. That makes people feel sorts of ways, but we are highly competitive. We see 42%, although that's my other side of our student body, participates in arts, which is nuts. We have 13 ensembles that people audition highly competitively for that meet before and after school that are largely student-run. And then we're the only school that I know of that articulates from the beginning. We support students in the athletics, core academics, and the arts all the time, and we make sure that students have the opportunity to become well-rounded people. So it is not uncommon that our quarterback for football, not this year, he's pretty cool otherwise, is in chamber singers, and that's like a normal part of our process, which is really good stuff. Things that we just want you to know, 40% of the student bodies participating in athletics this year, which is great. It is an awesome, awesome place to be. 42% is in music, just shy of 20% is engaging in AP or early college, so those are all great numbers for us. Everyone wanted to know how cell phones went. Things have been going great. We see kind of one or two or three kids a week who frankly just have other things going on in their life, and for the most part, other than that, things have been very consistent. You know, kids forget sometimes, we've had a few students get to the place where their parents have to come and pick them up. Parents have been largely supportive of that, as though they've been frustrated. You know, we apologize, they apologize, and it's not an issue. So it's been a great transition there. This year, we're able to offer a number of additional electives, things like anatomy and physiology, nutrition, kind of these higher-end science classes that were of student interest. We've also been able to offer things at the middle school level. Field ecology, as an example, is like rockin' and rollin'. The middle school kids were eating it and want to be there. We're also able to offer a Russian culture class. If you didn't know, Mill River is the only school in Vermont that offers Russian language, and our students also compete at the national level for essay contest writing, and one of our students last year got recognized. Typically, the people who apply to these are the people who are in private Ivy League feeder schools. So our kids compete at a really high level, which is great. Work in progress always, but it's a great work there and go there. The other really exciting thing is that we took a new kind of perspective on student life activities this year. We planned from the jump, three spirit weeks, ending in pep rallies and dances, which is great for high school, so they're already on the calendar. We've also encouraged some extra participation in things like homecoming. We've got open house coming up, and I'll talk about that in a second. It's rockin' and rollin', and we're trying to give kids the opportunity to find their place. We've got some new clubs starting, which we're really excited about seeing, and again, trying to just engage the kids in all ways that we can, which is awesome. And then with the, with our new athletic director, Chance Fee, he's brought a whole bunch of new positive energy to the table. One of the things we're working on this fall is trying for every team to do just something special for them. So girls varsity soccer was able to go to Castleton and play under the Lights, which was amazing for their opening game. Boys and girls soccer were able to be in Ludlow. Many of our students are coming from Ludlow and the surrounding community, so they're able to play on their home fields, which was really cool. And they had grass, which was really cool, too. And lights, that was pretty awesome. Football is often rockin' and rollin'. We're selling t-shirts for the Battle of Otter Creek, which is our annual, I don't know, event with Otter Valley, which is great. The t-shirts are 22 bucks, if I remember correctly, but the cool part, the front's like footbally, the back has all of our outcomes with against Otter Valley for the last like 15 years, which is super cool. I don't know, I just thought it was cool. So we're trying to do more stuff for our teams that are just kind of engaging and fun, and we've seen really good turnouts from the community and a ton of support from boosters. A little more cut and dry, so Mill River last year had a really big kind of large goal, which was essentially that Mill River is a place where all people are engaged and motivated and want to be, because that's where learning happens. That's sort of a big, 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 big-picture goal. My work last year, after kind of figuring out as a team that that was going to be our goal, building common language, common understanding. I'm the sixth principal at Mill River in the last decade, and that has created a whole lot of different experiences and expectations, and so a lot of my first year was just trying to find common language. What does it mean to be a teacher at Mill River? And how do we understand what that means for us as a community? What's a class look like at Mill River? We worked really hard to build these common kind of foundational understandings that are always in flux, but that was the work. This year is really focusing in on learning, and how do we prioritize that the educational experience for our kids is important? And I kind of, you know, zoomed in way, we have three goals for the year that are kind of data-driven. One is reduce, a reduction of chronic absenteeism. Typically, right at this point, we're looking at about 33.5% chronic absenteeism. That is on par with the county by and large. Most of the county has seen, and the state broadly, has seen increases of chronic absenteeism since COVID. At Mill River, it stayed pretty much at that 33-plus or minus mark for the last five years. Our numbers are not great, but they have stayed largely stable. We have faculty who are dedicated specifically to working through absenteeism and the attendance process, which has been really helpful to have someone dedicated to working through those systems. What do you get?
What is the definition of chronic absenteeism?
Missing more than 10 days. And so the, the state's got some definitions, different people do different things, but really, you're talking about someone's missed more than 10 days.
Sean, is it 10 days or 10% of the school year?
10 days. So 10 days, and that can be, for that number, based on where the system is, that includes things like medical stuff out, but we're talking a whole mix of things.
And is that for the whole school year?
Uh, yeah. So, yeah, so that's kind of where we're at. Our goal is to decrease that by 5%. That's modest, but we're trying to put some game plans in place and some changes related to our communication out. We're hoping to roll out a parent dashboard to look at attendance, so that parents can be directed to that, to look at like absences that your kid has, which may seem shocking, but in conversations I have with parents, they don't always realize how they stack up, or they don't realize they've missed five of their social studies classes until you show them, hey, they've missed five social studies classes, that's a lot of time. I think life is complicated, yeah.
What happens, like, just thinking about, like, looking at David, because I know his daughter's also in soccer, like, if a team leaves school early, which is happening because of the busing stuff, does that mean they're missing, are they marked absent for that class?
Those are school activities. So the same thing, if you went on like a field trip, we wouldn't count that against them. You know, if there's a kid who's going, you know, if we've got a game in Bennington, we have to leave early, there's no consequence there. We try really hard to balance that, and we're also trying to navigate with kids and faculty kind of the realities of our agreement, that students, that our athletics and arts and academics are equally important. So how do we kind of manage all of those things, which our kids juggle a lot, so, but yeah, that wouldn't count towards absences.
Thanks for clarifying.
And so, so there's that. Curriculum and assessment, our internal measure is called STAR. It's a test that we do three times a year. We're, I could spend the next two hours talking about standardized testing and education in Vermont, which is a whole other conversation. It's a metric. It's a metric we use. We're going to try to see how we do there. Mill River was an early adopter of proficiency-based education. I could spend two more hours talking about proficiency-based ed and how all that works, but long story short, a lot of our professional work for the year is really reflecting on our practices and our procedures and trying to renovate a system that's going to best support our kids. That's data-driven. We began some of that work this year as schools started bringing in some consultants from Burlington who are doing some good work, and really asking some of our teachers to reflect on their practice. And so far, there's been a lot of positive view there. We had our first kind of committee meetings today in departments, and folks are excited to kind of spend some time doing some heavy lifting there, and kind of really saying, okay, what's working, what's not, how do we know? And for a team that has had kind of principally whiplash over the last decade, their trust, for me anyway, is really humbling. Sometimes when you got a teacher who's been here for a long time, the only thing they have is their practice. They watched every, you know, person come and go, every sort of plan come and go, and they focus on what they can do in the classroom. And so their willingness to kind of reflect on that practice right now is, feels really awesome for me as a principal coming in, and really humbling, because it takes a lot of trust to be willing to kind of unpack your boxes. So we're hoping for a 5%, sorry, a 3% increase there, which is again, pretty typical and standard. Standardized test scores are complicated, and, you know, their overall effectiveness is an interesting question, but we like to have external measures to measure our own success against, so we get some sort of sense between those two things. Yes?
So, I mean, you talked about testing being important and kind of hard to quantify and basically different things, but could you just give like some statistics, like what percent of, you know, let's say ninth graders or 12th graders are at grade level, below grade level, or?
So can I caveat that for a second? I'll totally give you the numbers, can I just give you like a little asterisk there, though? So I'll use an example from math and state testing. So there is an ongoing conversation between me and the Department, the Agency of Education about math. Our curriculum in math spirals, meaning that we're going to go through part of algebra and part of geometry their freshman year, and then the second half of algebra and geometry this, their sophomore year. There's a whole lot of reasons why we do it like that, there's a lot of positive outcomes from there. The state test tests for someone who has done the entire year of algebra. So the problem we run into, and this is what our math department perspective is, we're testing for knowledge that the kids don't have and aren't going to have, and so the conversation with the AOE was, hey, what's your perspective? We are not the only people doing spiral math instruction, as an example. So there's a bunch of people in Rockland County and in Orange County that do this. It's not a weird, one-off thing. So six weeks ago, the response was, we'll get back to you, and then I jingled them when school started, and they said zero response, and then again, a week ago, zero response. I went to VPA saying, hey, VPA, which is the Organization for Principals in Vermont, what has been your experience? And that has been the lived experience of folks who are trying to talk to AOE about state testing. So, so just caveat there-ish, if you give me a second, I can grab your numbers for you.
So I just want to clarify, that standardized test, the students are being asked to take a test where they've only been instructed in 50% of the material?
Yep.
What is the point of that?
Correct, because the state requires that we do it. That is why I'm trying to caveat that, and I think when you look at best practice, what is the best practice for our kids doing a spiral curriculum? And our, and math has come and talked to the board about those decisions, that we see better outcomes for our kids, that their knowledge and understanding of mathematics is better, they don't do great on the test.
So what about their senior year, though? At that point, they've had all of this spiral curriculum, how do we do relative to the state?
State doesn't test senior year.
11, okay, I'm sorry, you're, I know.
Doesn't, doesn't test either, so they're testing in nine. And then they'll test again, yes, they'll test in nine, and then they'll test in science for 11.
How about VT caps, then?
Yeah, that's what we're talking, we're talking about the caps, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, I'd love to know STAR testing as well.
Yeah, so STAR testing, I have to grab. So STAR testing proficiency rate for last year was 47.3 in English, 33.4 in math.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I can also just send you this if you want.
Well, no, I just would like to know whether those are at, below, or above grade level?
Sorry, so these are people who are, these people who are, it's proficiency, so that's the level of proficiency.
Percentage?
Yes, percentage, that is proficient against their measures.
So that would be, 43% are proficient, which would imply that, what, 57% are not proficient?
Uh, yeah.
Correct.
So 43% are proficient, that was math?
Um, yeah.
And that was VT cap, ninth grade?
That was ELA.
ELA.
ELA, and so proficiency is 47.3 for English.
47.3%.
33.4 for math.
33.4% for math, so that's proficient and above lumped together.
Yeah, yeah. Vid cap measured at 46.4 in English.
VT cap, 46.4% proficient?
Math, 30.5.
30.5.
Science, 32.4. Yep.
Okay.
And STAR doesn't measure for science.
Does it measure, I believe it does measure relative to national norms, though?
Um, I don't want to misspeak related to where norms, I think so.
I think it does.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how our students perform relative to the nation?
I don't have that like off the top of my head.
And we sometimes, we can do like a board meeting where like this is the topic where we're going, we're deep diving into...
You brought up testing, so I, you said there's a lot of numbers, but then you didn't say any, so I was just curious to know how we're doing.
Yeah, of course, I just was saying we can like do a deep dive.
Yeah, and the hard part with that, and again, just non-transparency, and so I'll use like science as an example. So science tests in 11th grade, more than half of our students are going to Stafford, so like as an example, we can't control testing, testing procedures, accommodations. There's like all of these like moving parts here that I don't, that historically, from my understanding at Mill River, we've sort of taken with a grain of salt for like a lot of different reasons in terms of outcomes. We're also not talking about the fact that we've got like, you know, a really high percentage of students on IEPs who are, you know, in the low percentiles across the board that are never going to see that. So when we look at setting a goal for ourselves, is really a growth goal rather than a target goal, are we seeing increases across our kids over time? That's really kind of the game plan, and typical for most schools. We set a growth goal of 3%, we achieve that goal, we make those changes related to those, because we can really only compare against ourselves. These are the kids that we get. So there's that. And then lastly, because of all sorts of moving parts related to culture and community, it's one of our goals for the year is to improve kind of community vaguely, mostly because community is hard to measure in a lot of ways. That has looked a couple of different places. Faculty are engaging in individual committees based on their interests and how to improve culture here at Mill River. We're engaging in a couple of different levels with them to make them feel empowered. And, you know, I could go on about kind of the ways we're doing that, but the hope is to just support them through that work. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious, so if I can just break in here, you had mentioned 42% in athletics, 42 in arts and music.
Yeah.
I imagine there's a great deal of overlap there, as you suggested there with the quarterback and said. Do you have a figure for the percentage of students who are not engaged with any extracurricular?
Yeah.
And then also, I'm wondering if you've looked at this by gender break, you know, the Richard Reeves stuff of boys and men is, you know, has permeated sort of the education discussions, and I'm wondering if that's talked about in your faculty and if you're seeing it in your school?
So I don't have those numbers handy, to be totally frank. We don't keep as, as accurate numbers about student organization participation. There's a lot of overlap there.
That's fair.
It's easy to pull numbers for athletics, and it's easy to pull numbers for the arts, because one is buried inside of our curriculum and the other is kind of an explicit number. We also have people who are kind of transient, to be honest, in the, they'll do Model UN is typically a fall activity, is an example. We'll have, you know, 10 or 12 kids do that. That kind of teeters off after, you know, after they go to, they go to Yale for an activity, they kind of peter off there. You know, one of our subcommittees is looking at student engagement and kind of how, how we engage students in different ways. The other kind of also transparent thing when we think about student activities is there's a certain level of privilege to be able to participate in them if they're not kind of embedded in the school day. It is very hard to come back to school if you are leaving. You know, you can't get to Shrewsbury and back in any sort of reasonable kind of way. So, you know, how we engage and try to help students find their place here is a multi-layered, you know, process that I think Mill River's done a really good job at, and we continue to try to build opportunities based on student interest. So here's open, you know, as an example, just a silly one, we had a group of middle schoolers last year who were really into horses and had very few friends, so we talked through what a horse club might look like. We did a field trip to UVM, and on the day that I thought we were going to cancel for lack of people, it was 14 students who came in with permission slips ready to go. And, you know, categorically, these are, you know, students for whom finding their place has been a little bit of a challenge, so they went and spent a day together, formed some friendships in a positive, really pro-social way, and we're planning to run that as a club after school, probably starting in October or November. We just have some logistics stuff to work through. So like, we're trying to find places for kids to find their place.
I guess the reason why I tied it to the gender question is just about, you know, are there the extracurricular being created to engage boys in the...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you'll find that a high level of our boys are highly engaged.
Okay.
You know, I think, I don't have those numbers on, on my fingertips, I didn't kind of come armed with that, I'm happy to do that for next time, I'll report back to the board. You know, I think we've got some parents on the, on the board who have boys who are very actively engaged.
Yeah, and totally, like the, like the band and sports and the singing ensembles, that we have a musical this year for the first time in a long time, and so from those pieces, like I can't speak to like the AP classes, like that comparison of like gender, like breakdown, but like, it feels like, you know, everybody's engaged in a real way, and, but that's totally me, just...
I think Rich asks a good question with regard to gender participation. I don't know how it is at Castleton, but at UVM, when I was on the board there, it was 48% female undergrads, uh, rather, 58% female undergrad and 42% male. When I went there back a long time ago in the 1960s, it was exactly reversed. And so, you know, it would be interesting to know, is Mill River sending sort of equal amounts of both male and female students onto higher education? I don't know, has he asked that specifically?
Well, that's the trend, that they're seeing higher education, that it's overwhelmingly female, and it traces back to a lot of the things that Reeves is talking about.
So shouldn't we be concerned as a state, does Mill River hold in their own?
I'm, I mean, you know, happy to bring some of that information. I think last year's graduating class was highly academically successful. A large number of that class went on to higher education, the bulk of them went to UVM. A few folks went a little closer to home, you know, kind of across the board. I also think we've done, and I bring this up a little bit later, we've been working really hard to get students who are going to Stafford, we have 33 students who are going to Stafford this year. Typically, that number is closer to 15. They have reported they have a high, more competitive application process than UVM does, which is amazing. We've been having students who of all genders attend, kind of across the board there. You know, there is, there is a girl on our football team, you know, so we also have programming that we partner with other folks with. Castleton offers a Women in the Trades event that folks went to last year, I think it was at Castleton or it was somewhere nearby, or it was a different, I think it was a trades activity in Castleton, and a Women's in the Trades at another place. We would send kids to both. You know, we've been working hard to make sure there's equal opportunities there.
I have another question about alternative ed.
Sure.
You mentioned.
Yep.
Is your alternative ed program here on this campus, or is it somewhere else?
Nope, it's here on campus.
Can you tell a little more about it?
Sure, let me skip ahead a couple of slides. So, we have small group instruction, um, this is not the alternative ed program, yes. So, small group instruction, uh, last year, we were trying to figure out exactly how we were going to approach this, this kind of ongoing problem that we've had, um, with folks for whom traditional large group is really tough. Um, and so, it's, we've gone through a couple of different models. Um, this year, we have a full-time person, um, a certified instructor who does that. There are four core classes that are offered through alt. Some students will be in for part of the day, others will be in for all of the day. The bulk of our students are in for a little bit, but not for the entirety of the day. Um, and then what we're trying to do as well is tie in things like social emotional learning, interpersonal skills, um, you know, professional things, last week they were working on like resumes and how to have an interview and have a professional conversation, and really trying to engage the students on what is your professional path gonna look like. Some of that's also built into some credit recovery stuff, um, with a couple of course offerings for, um, inside social studies in particular, that there's some needs for the current population. So, um, the larger class they have right now is nine, which feels really good for students for whom large group instruction is really tough. And I think the smallest group they have at the moment is four, that number will fluctuate as they need, as needs pop up. There's a team of folks who will take in referrals for alt, uh, made up of the school counseling team, this instructor, someone from admin, and then really looking at an individualized plan of what do the students need to get across the finish line? What do they need in order to be successful? And so, Kelly Waterhouse, who's our instructor, has been here in various positions for a long time and is doing an incredible job trying to just offer stability and support for our kids for whom that is really tough. So, it's been good stuff there.
And these are not necessarily kids on IEPs.
No, these are explicitly not kids on IEPs.
Gotcha.
Do they have their little corner in the school that's their own?
Nope, they have a classroom, so.
They're all over the school?
Yeah, no, they have a classroom, so this isn't like an, in like a, like a self-contained classroom, right? And there are other schools who offer that.
Yeah.
We saw an uptick in sort of need for supporting students for whom a traditional classroom was too big. Or, you know, socially emotionally it wasn't working, or they were failing the same class a couple of different times. They needed something closer to more one-on-one individualized instruction time. Um, so we tried this model out last year, made some refinements for this year, and so far, we've seen some really positive outcomes. I know it's early, but we've got kids who have historically not engaged very well, who now through a level of consistency and expectation of seeing the same kinds of people every day, um, and getting a chance to work together collaboratively. It's great when you have a group of people you know well to work together and be successful, so it's been good stuff.
So, circling back to absenteeism.
Yep.
In my mind, some of the students you're talking about who are not successful academically would tend to be the students who maybe have more absenteeism than other students, so.
There's definitely a Venn diagram.
Yeah, yeah, and so are you seeing good attendance? Um, do you think, do you think that having this type of program supports attendance, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I think, you know, so, uh, without going too far down the rabbit hole, I'd say, you know, one student is an example for whom alt, I think, is, is really the thing that's going to help him get across the finish line. We saw, you know, kind of chronic absenteeism to a really high, a really substantial amount earlier in their academic career. Since we've offered alt the last two years, um, we've seen them here and engaged in like pro-social positive ways, which is a real improvement as well. The other thing is that for some of the kids for whom large group instruction is challenging, not only are they challenged there, and I'm sure, as you know, um, they're equally disruptive for other people. So, not only do they not want to be there, they want to make sure everyone in a room knows they don't want to be there, and/or their own individual challenges make it very complicated for a larger construction to take place. So, they're happier, they're more engaged, we're able to also identify gaps in their learning, which I think has really been one of the big things. You know, when you're in a group of four or five, a teacher can work with the kid to figure out really carefully where's the gap that's missing, and then build curriculum and experiences to fill in those gaps. So, these kids are finding success in the classroom they've never had before historically. Um, and I think that is itself, you know, transformational.
Yeah, that's true.
I had an absentee question also. So, just, um, discussing the connection between kids that are having trouble graduating and absenteeism. I mean, are there consequences for, specific consequences if a student has more than, say, ten absences?
So, there's, so there are thresholds from the state, so depending on where they go, they get letters at five, seven, and ten days. At the ten-day mark, depending on their circumstances and a lot of other moving parts, we would file an affidavit with DCF and take them to court for not being in school. Um, the challenges there are legion, so, uh, DCF is overworked. They will sometimes tell us they can't do anything. There is a time of the year where they say they will not take any additional affidavits as well. So, what we've been doing on the other end instead is trying really hard to engage those families. So, we partner with Barge in, um, in Rutland to partner to try to figure out what is the issue coming bringing this student not into school? How do we help support those? Can we do home visits to help those things out? Can we try to build in additional supports to get them here in the building?
Okay, so their social services get involved, basically?
So, we're trying really hard to do that, I mean, the reality, though, is that these are, these are really complicated situations. You know, none of these are, are simple like, hey, you know, come on buddy, you gotta get up. They're not, none of them are like that, unfortunately. And when we're looking at chronic absenteeism as an example, you know, some of those are also just like our family dynamics, you know. There's all sorts of like really complicated moving parts, where we're even just talking, you know, ten days can also be like, I gave my kid a bunch of days off, um, which we then get into like micromanaging the, the, you know, parenting approach to our, to our community, and that's a fraught place as well. So, the other thing we're trying to do is really just highlight for people that being here in the building is important, that time is important. I mean, when you think about it, in four years of high school, we get, you know, just shy of, you know, one point nine years of time to take a student who's in, you know, a ninth grader, to get them through all of the aptitudes, skills to move and be functioning members of society. One point nine years is not a whole lot of time. And then if they're chronically absent for a third of that time, that decreases it, so you're talking about getting them over the finish line into a productive member of society or productive-ish member of society, you know, in a year and change. So, trying to just narrate that and the importance of being here, and also talking about that Mill River is a great place to be. We offer a lot of stuff, and I think, you know, we also have many families who've been here through various variations and experiences. How do we tell them that this is a good place to be today? And then for folks for whom, you know, getting to the finish line is challenging, how do we support them? How do we partner with outside organizations, um, how do we engage them in different ways?
But there's no making kids go to like summer school or come on Saturdays specifically, to make up time lost?
There's no making kids do anything, right?
Like, or suggesting a requirement?
So, so, right, ideally, we offered summer school this year. So, one of the things that I noticed when I came on board is we had a number of students who were heading junior and senior year in the hole for credits pretty badly. So, we're talking in a place where they wouldn't be able to, unless we did something about it, naturally gain enough credits to graduate on time. So, one of the first things we did this summer was offer team-taught summer school. So, students were able to, we doubled the length of summer school, team-taught, and students were able to get two credits. So, we did a couple of things there, we pushed a hands-on, project-based model of learning, which is what we want to see here in the high school. Teachers were invited to, um, experiment, to create a curriculum that they want to engage with that would be of interest to the kids and high interest to the kids. We also made it kind of unpleasant for the kids, they had to be here for a good chunk of time for a good chunk of July. So, you know, we tried to, you know, give both of those conversations, but also said, here are two credits. So, we had kids come through the, this process who are now on track to graduate where they weren't before. And so, we'll continue offering those. The other nice part is that it off, it acted as an incubator for classes. So, as an example, one of those summer school classes then is now a high school class running for a semester that engages both science and English to offer a combo experience for our kids that is highly engaging for kids who have historically not been highly engaged, which has been great.
So, did summer school work? Did you get a high participation?
Uh, yeah, like, I want to say twelve or thirteen, it's not bad. Um, you know, is it catast-, you know, humongous, not particularly. I mean, and ideally, I'd like to be in a place where we phased out the need for summer school, because people are passing during the school year.
Right.
Also, it's not mandatory, right? And I can't, we, there's no equitable way to make it mandatory, because if you live up on the hill in Shrewsbury somewhere and have no transportation, I can't mandate you come. There's just no, there's no functional way of doing that, unless we're able to provide the resources to bus everyone in over the summer, which is like, this is adding zeros to the, to the problem.
So, I was gonna say, um, how are, how have those kids done in terms of the first weeks of school? Are there, is there attendance boosted?
In alt or just summer school or kind of?
Summer school in general.
Um, summer school, yeah, so we, uh, we have people, so some of the people, one person from summer school needed to cross the finish line to graduate. They were like a tiny bit shy of the finish line. Uh, he came in, did what he needed to do and ended and thanked us for the opportunity. Um, a lot of people worked really hard there. Um, in general, I'd say, yeah, for the most part, that's been pretty successful. So, some of those are alt students who are, who are definitely engaging in the program. Is their attendance great? Not particularly. Um, and the reasons for that, get into really specific reasons for it. Is it improved? Yeah, absolutely, so I think it's a worthwhile issue. Um, and then again, we have a couple of seniors for whom like graduation was not on the table. Now it is, we're seeing them every day now. Um, and again, hope is a really hard thing to measure, um, but you got kids who feel like they're gonna be able to graduate in June, and last year they didn't. So, that's the hope there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you said last year, everybody, everybody graduated? You got everybody?
By the time, by the time of Del Sol, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic, actually, that's, that's a good job. So, I know, we've been asking some tough questions here and.
All good.
You know, well, yeah, but you, we tend to drill down on where the problems are, because, so I think it's also important to say, I think that's really, that's impressive. Hopefully, that'll happen this year.
And a lot of people put a lot of work in, you know, this is not, you know, the, if I had some other people here, they would tell you that there were some personalities involved, that there were some unique and creative challenges to those people. But I think the power that happened, though, I mean, not for nothing, you know, our team cares so much about kids, and I'm not saying that is kind of like a throw-off line, I mean, we've got people who were staying late, creating new curriculum, were challenging the kids to get their job done and having hard conversations. Um, also, the other thing that we did that was really uncomfortable for folks is we set some deadlines. We told folks, um, if they were not passing by, uh, the third week of May, they would not walk. So, historically, we'd let people walk who had not, who were not done graduating yet, and that put us in a position of like trying to fit, hump them down. They wouldn't get a diploma, but they'd walk and have all of these senior experiences. So, you know, on top of all the meetings we did ahead of that time, there was a really clear line in the sand that we narrated to families as well. So, with this support was also this line saying, this is what we're doing. Um, and some people, I think, really needed that moment, and we had some really tough conversations with some kids, you know, through most of the spring saying, this is, there's no give. And for some of them, that's a new experience for them too. But, it was good, we worked, it worked out pretty well, and I think, you know, there's a lot of pride to go around for that work. I'm gonna try to summarize a couple of things, it's cool. I apologize if I'm a little scattered at this point. Uh, enrollment at Mill River is going up, which is wonderful, we're currently at three seventy-five on the nose. Um, I put this on there just to forecast a little bit. If you look at our twelfth grade class, it's fifty-one kids, if you look at our seventh grade class, it's seventy. So, we're looking at an increase between those two of twenty kids. That may not sound like a lot, it is an enormous number. In two years, we will have forty more kids in high school than we currently do, which is essentially the bulk of one entire class. So, some of our planning, uh, that we're looking at is long-term, as we bring folks on board, we move people around, we try to build, as example, the science program up to where we want it to be again. Um, so, we're thinking about this from a long-term view, because we're gonna need the seats and we're gonna need the offerings, yes.
Does that trend hold going down through?
Uh, so, yeah, so, here's the, here's the hard part there. So, inside the district, we're at about kind of fifty a grade level plus or minus a couple. The problem when you get to seventh grade is that we have, um, partner schools who can choose to or not to send their students here. We currently have a really positive existing relationship with the communities that are sending kids here, um, and I would expect that those kids are gonna continue to come here, um, for the hypothetical foreseeable future, but we can't pressure them, we go to schools and talk about it, that number can go up and down. That happens again in ninth grade, which can be a little bit zany. We have a highly, um, a highly sought-after special ed program, um, our pathways program is, is, uh, doing amazing, beautiful work, so we get kids from all sorts of places, come into pathways, um, and here to the high school. So, those numbers are just, it's hard to forecast, but like, I would assume we got nearly every student from some of our sending schools. I would expect that seventy number to stick for a bit, which is great.
Trying to find out if it was like a bubble, like there was a few rich years or.
I don't think this is gonna be a bubble.
Back all the way down.
So, it's just a thing we're thinking about a little bit now. Um, it's made a couple of wacky kind of, um, of, um, adjustment issues with, with kind of class sizes a little bit, where we're trying to just even those out, and getting the right people in the place, knowing that it's, that there's going to be a larger call for courses in certain places and certain kind of needs, um, which is great, it's a great problem to have. Uh, but it requires a little bit of long-term thinking, uh, because otherwise, we're gonna be in a position where if I, if I'm planning for fifty, or I'm planning for a hundred and suddenly I have a hundred and fifty, it is gonna be very challenging for us to find homes in a meaningful way for an additional fifty kids. So, uh, I will bring this, these numbers back up as I, uh, present to the board over the course of the year and as we move forward, just so you know. Uh, we also, like I said, thirty-three students who are attending Stafford, uh, that's a crazy high number, it's awesome, super great that they're able to do that. Um, admissions at Stafford are blind, they have no idea who these kids are, they see their grades, they see their application materials, they take them or they don't, and our kids are highly competitive and going to Stafford, uh, which is amazing. So, that's really cool to see, um, as well. Couple of challenges, um, some people have heard about a few of these, but I want to be honest and transparent about them, and I'm happy to talk about them if you want, if you feel like you, we don't have to, that's okay too. Um, we've had some challenges with food quantities and options in the cafeteria. Uh, folks saw a letter from me on Friday, um, I will say that this week has gone exponentially better than it has the last couple of weeks. Again, to clarify, there, I know there's a lot of kind of different perspectives related to that. None of our students were, were turned away hungry if they told folks that they needed food. That is not who our kitchen folk, that our kitchen and our food service people are. They're a third-party contractor as well, so that prevents us from like walking back and throwing six hundred burgers on the grill. One, we don't have a grill, two, there's no burgers to do that with, so, um, it's a challenge there. Um, they've been responsive the entire time, um, you know, the, the challenge frankly that happened was as, as they were, have been working through their menu as an example, some of the more, you know, sort of kid-friendly preferred items, like a taco bar and cheese pizza and a hamburger with tater tots every single day. Uh, some of those went up and down related to access, and so one of the things that happened in particular was, um, one day as an example, the entree, uh, was a, um, like a very veggie-heavy protein kind of mix, um, that was kind of like a stir fry, the kids didn't know what it was called. It was like, there was a sign saying what it was, um, the kids then, because they're children, uh, went straight to the pizza, wiped out the pizza, when that was gone, they then went back to grab the salads as fast as they could. By the time that was done, the only thing left was the entree that people were feeling iffy about, and there were probably fifteen or twenty kids who were kind of stuck with the entree. For students who are, uh, having dietary restrictions, you know, the staff make alternatives for them, um, if they know, right? And that was a conversation I just had with the upperclassmen today, with a student who's like, I'm a vegetarian and all the salads are gone. Absolutely, does the staff know that you're a vegetarian? Well, no, they don't. Okay, because they will set a, a portion aside for you to ensure that you can have food. So, we're working in communication there a little bit, um, and they're also just willing to problem solve. So, this week has gotten much, much, much better, which is great. Um, my hope is that this is kind of the, the, we're good, in a good spot. If we haven't been, again, I totally accept feedback related to that, to work with our team to do that. Um, I will say a few of our students discovered that if they call home and say lunch wasn't palatable, their parents will deliver McDonald's. I don't know about you, but I would sure probably prefer my parents deliver me McDonald's. So, there were a couple of instances of that, transparently, and our conversations with families alluded to, maybe that was actually the problem. Um, I would much prefer, uh, my parents drop off pizza as well. So, that happened a little bit too, because kids are kids. Um, there have been some challenges with busing, um, we know that, our busing situation, and I think there's gonna be an update later in the meeting, I'll leave them there. Course balancing, again, trying to get, uh, the right number of kids based on schedules, we're a small school. Uh, it means we don't always have an opportunity to offer, you know, multiples of every class that is convenient for every single person's situation, but we try really hard. The varsity field has been a challenge, there's currently grass on it, thank goodness. So, that has been an ongoing thing. Um, and again, just ensuring that the community, you know, feels that time in school is valuable and meaningful, it's just been an ongoing conversation that we've been narrating for folks, and we hope, um, folks see the importance of being at school. I'm gonna try to wrap up, our school counseling department typically has a presentation today. They were unable to make it tonight, just a couple of highlights there in case you didn't know. We have three, three school counselors, two in high school, one in middle school. Their work is sort of to be ninjas in the school, if you didn't know. They do kind of whatever they need to, whenever they need to do it, which is awesome. Um, that means on one level, they're doing academic success stuff, like getting kids in classes, getting them to college visits, trying to figure out what to do there. It also means interpersonal stuff, so when you're having a bad day or your boyfriend dumps you and you're in tears, you are typically going to your school counselor, uh, which is, uh, they've been great. Uh, they also offer programming, like college nights and visits. Um, we're also working on a guest speaker series to come in and talk about, uh, different fields of study to our kids. So, we'll be looking for people to do cool stuff soon. We're hoping to do that, um, like once a month to get some kid interest there about kind of options that are available. Um, they also work with kids who are having, you know, conflicts with each other, talking about, you know, how does your friend group interact, stuff like that. Um, and they also serve as our mental health counselors, and part of our crisis teams, as well as our kind of academic support team. So, they do a little bit of everything and they are fantastic, um, which is great. Talked about alt, um, things to look forward to, um, I'm wrapping up. Ninth grade goes to Bethany Birch's every year, which is great, that is a ropes course in Plymouth. Um, they've been going, I think this is year four or five, so they'll be going here on Friday. Spirit week is next week, uh, I think the winner of excitement is going to be the Anything But A Bag Day. You may bring anything you want but a bag to school. Open house is Thursday next week, it's from six to seven thirty. If you have not been to a Mill River open house in the last year or so, uh, it is busy. We had something like five hundred people last year. So, we have teachers who are doing presentations, um, in their classrooms, so you can come and wander, please come and visit. We also have, uh, about fifteen community partners coming that night, who'll be cabling to talk about the work that we do with them and the work that they do. Um, that includes a couple of, of recruiters from the military and also just people that we work with throughout the region, um, from various different, um, organizations, which is cool. Uh, this is our climbing team. Pet Rouse on Friday, uh, we tend to, we have a homecoming bonfire next Friday, we are probably canceling that. Um, I am waiting for the fire marshal to tell me that, uh, lighting a fire is a bad idea, it's okay. I would like you to know, I called them on Tuesday and they're like, get, let's wait a few more days. And I was like, alright, I don't think the answer's gonna be any different, but like, I don't want to be the guy who lit Rutland County on fire. But, hope springs eternal.
It did sprinkle today.
Yeah, that, like.
I know, like a tablespoon.
We're probably gonna do something this winter, um, along with like the, after the winter dance or something, like out in a snowbank. Um, it'll be fine, but there was excitement about it and I wanted to just kind of keep that excitement going. Homecoming. it and I wanted to just kind of keep that excitement going. Homecoming games are gonna be next Saturday. Clubs and organizations are gonna have activities there that night, including a dunk tank. They're offering possibly Pig Plop Bingo, if you are interested. Please don't make me explain what Pig Plop Bingo is on camera. It's exactly what you think. There's a dunk tank. And then the freshman class is doing some sort of thing with tomato throwing. We just work here sometimes. It'll be a really good day for folks. We're hoping it'll be fun and just like a nice community activity day. The grass on the varsity field is growing, which is wonderful and amazing. I didn't think it was going to. Homecoming dance next Saturday. Like I said, we have a college night coming up in early October, and then we'll have guest speakers coming in to kind of chat about different stuff, which is great. Yes, please.
Quick question.
Please.
Because I know you're having a spaghetti dinner.
That was the one thing I forgot. Sorry. Spaghetti dinner, open house, six to seven-thirty. All you can eat, fifteen bucks. Fresh, soft, sorry. Seniors are doing as their first fundraiser. Seniors need some money. So, you know, just as a heads up there, if you wanted to, um, show up, it's gonna be really good. But let's go with fundraising is maybe not where their heart and soul's at, which is great and fine. They're realizing how much it costs to run a prom. And that has a lot more zeros than I think any of them thought, which is great.
So what time was that spaghetti dinner?
Six to seven-thirty is all of open house, so they're, it's gonna run concurrently with open house. Feel free, if you wanna come and grab a box and run away because you don't wanna eat dinner with five hundred people, I don't blame you for a second. But I think open house will be fun. It was really fun last year and the energy was just really positive, which was awesome. Things also to look forward to, some of our other classes are doing some fundraising or planning some stuff. I heard a rumor, we might have a car show in the spring. That'll be cool. We've been trying to talk through with our, our classes to think about community events as fundraisers rather than like selling cookies or cookie dough, you know, it's an, it's an ongoing process.
Is that open house tomorrow?
Uh, next week.
Next Friday, next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Sorry. At some point, they all just blur together in my head. Yeah.
So on the Anything But A Bag Day?
Yep.
Can they bring animals?
No.
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 Well, you said anything.
So they have, they have, anything, anything zany has to get pre-approved. I think last year, there was like, I, someone, I think, tried to bring their kayak last year. We gotta talk about that a little bit. I think it lasted, you know, long enough to get the pictures and then got set aside, so you're not dragging a kayak everywhere.
So you have to be able to carry it with you?
That's the.
I would say nothing motorized and nothing with a heartbeat.
Yep, that would all be good stuff. So we got that stuff.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions that people can think of? This is a sticker that went around. This is a copy of a picture of our field and it's an inside joke, I believe, about the grass.
Wow, looks great.
We shared this with some people who've been on the, the long, long, long journey of the field. Yeah.
This may be pointless, but absenteeism is something that is obviously a problem. Is there anything the board could do to support or, you know, help work on that problem?
Or? You know, I think communicating to our constituencies that being at school's important. You know, I think the, the reasons for absenteeism are really unique per kid and per family that make, the thing that we found is that universal sort of things don't work super well. Cindy Jarvis, who's our attendance coordinator, calls every individual family and talks to them and meets with them. And then our, our response to them is highly kind of personalized.
Sure.
Related to that. And that's where we found success. So I don't have a thought. I'll bring it back to the team and see. You know, also like a little patience and also knowing that like, our numbers frankly aren't any different than anybody else's numbers are. You know, our hope at this year in particular is a modest change that is really related to how do we communicate individual family circumstances back to them. So when you let, you know, when you have your student out for five days, that there's, you know, a negative consequence for that and, on their learning. And hey, here's a platform that you can take a look at in case you didn't realize how much they've been out, as an example. We've also started including in the newsletter, just like little boards about the need for attendance, kind of at the bottom for people to look at, just trying to make people additionally aware. So I don't have a good solution about how to, how to do that.
Well, I mean, it's not, there's no silver bullet, but actually you did offer one concrete thing that we all can do, which is as the conversations happen with our neighbors and other people that have kids, is try to drive them aboard that time on task is critical.
Yeah.
I would like to offer that on our, in our neighborhood, which has lots of children of all ages and who I see and engage with constantly. I try to, I hire them to do chores all the time. They are extremely casual about school attendance and so are their parents. I mean, there's not, I'm, I'm actually very surprised by it.
It's a nationwide trend.
I mean, COVID really changed.
They basically, I mean, this is not illness. There's nothing wrong. They treat it very optionally. And, I mean, I don't wanna be judgmental, but it, it's a little shocking. And these are not troubled families. These are, it just isn't a priority. And I don't know. So, thank you for.
We're trying to narrate that. And we're also trying to make sure it's valuable for, for students to understand, you know, and giving, and giving stuff and working on.
So I always ask them, why aren't you in school?
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, sometimes just because it's Tuesday.
Because it's, because I didn't want, yeah, anyway. I just wanted to put that out there that, and there's a lot of them. So, thank you.
I mean, we're working on it. You know, we got good kids.
Could you give me like a quick summary of the MTSS system at Mill River High School?
Yes. Sorry. The sigh was just the succinct part, which is not my forte. So MTSS is, for folks who don't know, it's multi-year system of support. It was done by Act One Seventy-three a couple of years ago in Vermont. There was a lot of training about it and different districts applied it in really, really different ways. So here in the district, and I can't quote it beginning to end, so I apologize, there's an entire handbook about it. For students, the idea is that if a student needs additional support, would they get it in a bunch of different ways? So some of that may look, depending on the kid, in a, in a variety of situations. Students may get a double dose of a class. So let's suppose I'm in school, I'm running a regular class, and I need kind of a second round of it. So we have a flex block in high school and middle school, so students would go back to the same teacher to get a second round and additional support. Sometimes it looks like tutoring. Sometimes that might be an entire class or a big chunk of the class to get a reteach. Depends on the circumstances there. So we have a little bit of that. We have two levels of supported study halls. One is sort of a gen ed study hall for people to do work in. The other's collaborative learning, which people are working individually with a particular faculty member to do, to learn kind of good academic habits, set some goals, really start engaging with that work as well. So we've seen some success in there. And that's been a long, you know, self-help has been at Mill River, I think, since they built the building probably. So that's a pretty familiar thing. From there, that's kind of lacking of success. We have a couple of different places to go. The EST system is the educational support team. They meet, I forget where we are at this point. I think we're doing once a month. So that entire team is made up of all the, the teachers, school counselors, admin, kind of everyone who is engaging with the kid to look at what has been a problem, what is the concern, where are the gaps, and to develop a plan to kind of fill in those gaps. And so what are the interventions that will help support that student in a particular circumstance, whether those schedule changes, meeting with our behavior interventionist, it just sort of depends on the circumstance. Those are data-driven and those get reviewed based on what the team feels is appropriate over the course of the year. Students can onboard or offboard there.
So a kid, so a student who's maybe not proficient in math?
Yeah.
Would probably be on EST?
Depends on, on kind of a couple of moving parts there. It's part of data-driven. So, you know, every single, you know, or seventy, seventy-three percent of the building on EST plans now. You know, are we looking at kids who are, you know, based on the percentiles and where they fall there? Yes. The other thing that we run into is that some of those numbers, as an example, are students who are in IEPs or in 504s. That's a whole separate track of levels of support. So, so it depends on kind of where we're looking. I can grab our current EST numbers. They sunset every year, so we're in the process of re-upping ESTs.
Wait, sunsets your EST plans end every year?
Yeah. That's pretty typical.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, thank you, Sean.
Sorry.
I'm gonna move us along a little.
Lastly, we love transportation. Facilities have been awesome, wonderful, and the athletics team has been working really hard.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, do that, do that, do that.
That has been my last thing. Board presentations for the last year and a half, just last-minute shout-outs after you ask me questions. Sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Cheryl.
Presentation's great. They've been really busting their tail to get us places. The facilities and food service team have been responsive to our needs as the building has gone. And athletics team has really hit the ground running in ways we could not have even asked for if we'd known to ask. So big shout-outs to them. Thanks.
Does anybody have any?
Thank you, Sean.
Questions? I'm sure if you email Sean?
Yep.
Any questions, you'd be happy to.
Thank you, Sean.
Respond. Everybody good? Thank you, Sean. That was.
No worries.
Sean, I'd say it's good that you speak fast, because you covered a lot of material.
Ooh.
I mean, and again, if there's something you want to talk about specifically, I'm happy to come better prepared for some of those things. Happy to do that, too. I am gonna hang out for Addie. Addie is super excited to present to you and nervous to do so, so I'm just gonna hang out. Don't mind me.
Is she gonna be, well, you're back. Yeah. Okay.
Good. We'll make sure to ask her some really tough questions.
Yeah, well, really.
This is a volunteer position for her, too.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So, okay, so transportation update, you gave us a little bit of information. But Cheryl, you wanna?
Yes.
Talk to us about how, what you're finding out. How's it going?
Depends upon the moment. At this exact moment, we have seven routes and seven drivers plus Connie. But we did have a driver who was out on medical, maybe coming back tomorrow. And yet, even with that, we were forced to change a game later so that we could get our students to the game. We didn't want them to have to leave at noon and then go there and sit there. The issue is that with that one driver out, that means Connie will drive, has to drive the route, which means that she's not here to drive students on the, to the games. We will be, in all likelihood, canceling a game tomorrow due to a lack of drivers. So, few things. So one of the things I want you guys to, I would like to, you know, make you, ask you to think about is, could we potentially get another driver so that we have kind of like a backup? Because it was early in the school year. I had told someone on the board, I can't remember who, I'm like, oh, we're in a good spot with transportation. And then all of a sudden, everybody just dropped like flies. And we ended up having to cancel routes because someone got sick suddenly. Someone was hospitalized. Another person is taking the day off for personal reasons. And we had no one to drive. So one of the things I did hear, because I wasn't at the last meeting, that Tim reached out to Betscha. They said they could not help us, that they were actually short drivers and the owner was driving. So I did reach out to First Student. They will be giving us a quote before the next board meeting, so I do plan on presenting what they, their costs are. They have, you know, they've told us a few things that they have that are beneficial to us, but there's a lot of us, for us to think about, right? We could potentially, they could buy, they could buy our buses from us, which would be a cost savings. And then they would use those buses, because we have good buses. I have to say, they're well-maintained and up to date as far as they're not old. We have ten of them. They could buy them and use, so that they would buy them from us and use those buses to transport our students. Now, one thing, that sounds good, but then potentially, say, three years down the road, right, we decide that they're way too expensive, now we have no buses and we're starting from ground zero. So there's a lot for you guys to think about. Just know that Connie's working her tail off. So is Tim and everyone. And we're just trying to get students back and forth. Yet I know it's frustrating. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify something. Are you, so you're saying that we have seven drivers?
Yes.
But we have ten buses. So does that mean that there's three buses that are basically not getting used?
No, because we only have seven, we have seven bus routes.
Okay. So, but all ten buses see use?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Over the last few weeks, have we been able to, has Shrewsbury been consolidated for the last several weeks?
Yes, because we do have a bus driver who had medical issues and is out and potentially, you just never know, is slated to return tomorrow. We did have a van driver that we had hired, and the day that he was supposed to start, he called in and said, yeah, I think I'm not interested anymore. So, I mean, it's very, very frustrating. Yeah.
When you were talking about getting another driver, is that hiring another person?
Yes.
To be a backup driver? So what would they do if, when they're not needed?
Well, that's what we'd have to figure out, right? Could we, I was talking to Tim this afternoon, very informally, just like bouncing ideas off. We do have, the high school would like a custodian to, to be able to clean the tables after breakfast. Could we have that person have a quasi, you know, position if we're hiring them that way, right? Our bus drivers, I mean, our custodians don't necessarily wanna be bus drivers, but that doesn't mean we might not be able to hire someone that way. We could also, because this has happened before Connie was there, we could take, we'd even asked her para-professionals. Do you wanna make more money by driving in the morning? Be a para, and we have that with one person at Tinmouth and then drive again. She's already told us she's retiring at the end of the year. So we're, like, every avenue we can think of.
With First Student, is there a possibility just to have, like, do they have drivers? That we could be like, yes, we'll take one driver?
So.
Use our bus or not?
I don't know, because full transparency, I was a bit concerned, because they've asked me multiple times if my drivers would go. And I said, I honestly don't know. And I haven't asked them, because we're so early in the process that I don't know if this is going to be feasible, right? I need to talk to Stan to say, what is our overall transportation cost, and then compare it to what they say. I do know that their, the drivers, if they went with them, are guaranteed four hours a day. We only do three and a half. They are able to collect unemployment during our vacations, which our drivers are not at this point. And they do have technology as far as a parent at any time can pull up and see where the bus is. So I think that is, you know, one thing. But it's really, so my, my message to you is, I don't know. We're trying different avenues. Even like, is BJ still here? He came up with a good idea. It wouldn't be a quick solution, but if we could get the legislature to change the rules, right, this would take lobbying and time, so that a ten-to-fifteen passenger van does not need a CDL, that would probably open up the pool of drivers. Because right now, if you have a CDL, you can go make forty, fifty dollars an hour, forty hours a week, as opposed to, you know, a, a small, we pay quite well, I will say. But you, you don't have as many hours and you don't work during the summer. You've got certain weeks off.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but we have two fifteen-person vans, is that?
We have two regular minivans.
So you don't need a CL, CDL to drive them?
But they don't fit as many students in it.
I think there's, I think you do. I think you, you can only take, I think, maybe four students without a, without a CDL. I think you, five, five?
Five.
Yeah.
Five. There can only be six people in the vehicle.
You can only do, right, that's.
Because that fits. Yep. And I will say, I've been impressed with everyone who gets in the van and is just driving the van, right? We've had our secretaries, Deb and Rebecca, Teresa Sir, Coral, who else am I missing? Maggie. I'm like, where'd they go? Oh, they're driving kids.
So could that conceivably be a volunteer position? That you have a list of people that are willing to drive the van if they don't have CDLs? I mean, that do the?
We currently, Coral was able to hire two van drivers.
Okay.
And so, I mean, we could conceivably ask for volunteers.
Take pressure off with the driving.
Yeah. Well, but we have that covered right at this moment.
Okay.
I feel like I need to say that.
Okay.
Because it, it does change. But it's just something to think about, that if we had an extra driver, and then that kind of leaves Connie as someone then who's available to do the sports, or when people are out. I mean, you know, that Friday, we just, all of a sudden, we had one driver get sick, one was, you know, already we knew was out, and then a third one had asked for the day for a personal reason.
So what's the process or?
Well, it seems like, on the one hand, we know that the custodians aren't really interested in being bus drivers. But if we hired an additional driver where we explicitly state, you're a backup driver, and if we need you to drive, you drive. But if we don't need you to drive, I've gotta believe there's plenty of custodial work of one sort or another that, you know, would justify that person's time.
Or even a para-professional.
Fine. But the point is, finding alternative work for them that would be palatable.
Absolutely, that, yes.
So you, are you, I'm just wondering what the board can do to, to kind of? So, you, are you, I'm just wondering what the board can do to, to kinda open that up so that if you explore it, you can actually take action on it? Do we, do you wanna motion to, how do we do that? What do people think? Should it go to finance? Should it, should we wait?
I think, feel like we should wait till we hear the proposal from student first or whatever.
First students.
First students.
Which is, just, which will be, like, next meeting.
They promised me they would have it next meeting, and I asked them to give it to me a few days ahead of time so that I could really go through it and be able to present it appropriately.
Is this, Carol, is this something that you come out of personnel?
Or finance? I'm not sure. What do you think?
Probably both.
Lenny?
I mean, that was gonna be my question. What are we able to do in this current budget year versus what are we able to do for the next year's budget? I don't know. Maybe, maybe none of us know that answer right now.
I don't know right off the top. I, I, just from the personnel perspective, I mean, I was here the other day and a gentleman came in to apply for a bus driver position.
Yeah. I said, you let him in, right?
So, I did. I opened the door and said, go ahead, run in. But I think, you know, unless it becomes a financial issue, I, I think we hire whoever we can to do whatever we can. The van drivers, you know, I think, again, there you need to be a little careful, because, I mean, you might be able to hire someone as a replacement, but you only have two vans.
Right.
So, you know, four van drivers don't do you much good. So, you gotta be a little careful there. But I, I would say, you know, if, if someone comes in, and are we still advertising? I guess that would be my key question.
I believe Connie has two people who have applied and are interested. So, we had zero interest, and all of a sudden, now we're getting people who are applying. So, I do feel confident that she can probably get us one more driver relatively quickly.
Well, and I, I guess I would just say, I think we oughta keep advertising.
Good job, Marcus.
But if that particular position isn't in the budget?
Right.
Do, do, does she need us to say, go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. So, would somebody like to make a motion about that?
I'll make a motion that we authorize Connie to hire one more driver.
One additional driver, okay? And Rich seconds. Okay, any discussion?
That would be a CDL driver, yes.
CDL, right.
A full-size.
I wanna make sure.
I have a question. Do we have that in the budget to do that? That's what it, we have to...
We're talking about adding a position into this, into...
Part-time position.
It's part-time.
In addition to the position that's already open, right?
There is no.
There is no open position.
We're talking about creating a new position?
Right.
For this fiscal year.
So, we have, we'd have to find that.
We'd have to find out if we have finances. We do have one para-professional opening still. And that might be something that we could, you know, have the para-professional and then also tell them that, you know, we could have them as a backup driver, if that works.
So, I guess, your, let's clarify your motion.
We need to figure out the finance.
So, is the motion to authorize Cheryl to follow up and?
We, we don't need to make a motion for her to follow up.
I think we make the motion, I mean, Stan isn't here, so we can't ask him the question. But we're talking about a part-time position, right?
Right.
Not a full-time position. And just...
Well, it could be.
Well, but...
But you have the funding for the paras.
That's right, okay.
The bus driver's job, though, like our existing bus drivers, those aren't full-time positions, right? Okay. So, and I could be totally wrong, but just from listening to Stan talk at previous meetings, and Stephen, you may be able to offer some more insight on this. There is some fat in the budget to work with, not, not tons.
Budgetable dollars.
I don't, I don't feel like we're taking a big gamble, and it's addressing a fairly big problem to say, yeah, let's try to hire, create another part-time position as a bus, backup bus driver who would then also do something else.
So, when one of these bus drivers is sick or doesn't work, you don't pay them, do you?
No. So, we're saving money. Well, they do have some sick time, but...
I mean, some of that revenue could be used to help to pay the substitute driver. Could they not?
Yeah. They do have some sick time. It's prorated depending upon how many hours they work. So, maybe.
Isn't the sick time budgeted?
Excuse me?
The sick time's budgeted, though, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is budgeted.
So, the same thing implies.
Yeah.
From a budget point of view, though, you'd have to assume that you're paying the existing bus drivers their, the full-budgeted amount. And then you're creating a new part-time position, which you would also then be paying the full expected amount. Now, that might not work out if you have people that are sick or for whatever reason don't show up. But from planning point of view, you have to, that's what the figures, one would have to use, I think.
I just wanted to say that I think if there is a position being created, which I am in favor of, that it should also explicitly state that they are a substitute or relief bus driver with expectations that other duties would be expected of them. So, that's not a surprise, either being a para educator or assisting the custodial staff. And make that part of the position, yes.
Agreed.
That was what I was saying.
I just, clarifying question, if I can. At this point, we have hired all of the bus drivers that have been budgeted. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Sometimes I feel like I'm...
Well, it's closed, like, there's no open position.
Yeah, yeah. And...
Yes, we have seven drivers. We're currently down one due to an illness. And we just got the seventh one on. But even with...
And I agree with Stephen, this is more of finance than, than it is here for the full board. But my, and the only other thing I'd state is, there is a para-professional position that is empty.
Correct.
Which means money.
Right. That creates some slack in the payroll budget at that point.
I mean, on the flip side, though, theoretically, that para position is a need in our school community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So...
Yeah. No, I'm not saying you eliminate it and put it here.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if we fill that position with a bus driver, then we can't fill that position with a para without kicking the can down the road, like, for now.
But we have gained some space in that it hasn't been filled to this point. So, we've gone to this point in the school year with that savings.
Connie is on, is here. I just didn't know if Connie wanted to say anything or let us know.
Connie, did you wanna speak or jump in?
We might have put her asleep.
And just know, I wasn't expecting a motion. I wanted just for you to think about it as we're, you know, exploring all other options.
Well, I think for you to go ahead and explore this whole extra position, I wouldn't want you to go through that and then come, then you come back and we say, no, no, you can't do that. So, I guess this is kinda...
Connie's muted.
Oh, Connie, well...
Hi, Connie.
We're not hearing you. We hear that.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. The, the way that it's set up is we're allowed to have the seven bus drivers get paid regular rate. What we need to be able to do is to, that any but, drivers be above and beyond that are paid lower rate, and that nobody is gonna come in for a lower rate. So, we need to get the board to say that the next driver we hire as a sub gets to be paid at the higher rate, not the lower rate, or you're not gonna get anybody.
Okay. So, that, I think that's what, instead of saying hiring a sub driver, which is already in the budget at a set rate, I think what the motion is saying, hire another position of driver, which would address what you're saying, right?
Yeah. So, maybe, maybe the motion oughta, oughta say...
That's why I was saying.
We are, we are making a motion to create a, an eighth, full, it's not full-time, but an eighth regular bus driver position slash, whether it's para educator, custodial. We have, and that would be something for Connie to figure out, or Cheryl rather, I meant to say Cheryl. Figure out what their, their alternative role would be if they're not driving. But is that what you were saying, Connie?
Yes.
Okay.
It needs to be stated that, that when we hire another person, they're a regular bus driver, not a sub.
Right, okay. Is everybody clear on that?
No.
No.
Can we, just point of order, because we have a, a motion here, can we just either present or vote it down?
Gotta get the person who seconded it to...
I'll pull back, yeah.
And then the person who made the motion needs to withdraw.
All right, let's see if I got this right. We're making a motion to...
Okay, hold on. So, we're gonna, Rebecca, just, we're gonna withdraw that motion and we're remaking a new one. Okay, go for it.
Making a motion to create an eighth regular bus driver slash alternat, you know, whatever that, whatever the second part of that phrase would be, position.
To be paid?
That, to be paid the regular bus driver's wage.
Okay. Now, is there a second for that? Ned, second? Any other discussion?
What does that cost? What are we talking about here? Is this fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget?
Well, that's why I, I was gonna say authorize Cheryl and, and...
To explore.
Because I think the superintendent and the business manager can look at that and see whether it's feasible. And what we're saying is, if we're giving her, basically her, we're giving Cheryl and Stan permission to do that if they can make it work in the budget. That's the way I understand it.
Just add a friendly amendment, then, just contingent upon the budget, yeah.
So, I, next, I was just thinking, at the next, or the next meeting then Cheryl, when we have the First Student, thank you. And then also, maybe we, we'll see where that funding can come from, if it's internal, if for another position, and we're able to see the two, or the, like, differing possibilities.
Do we have to wait for another full two weeks? I mean, it sounds like you have two applicants right now. I mean...
We have to figure out where that fund, those funds are coming from.
Yeah, I have to make sure that we, I agree with that. I have to make sure Stan will be back Monday and we can discuss, like, Stan will know off the top of his head, he's really good, if we do have the funds to do this.
But do we have to wait for another meeting to, can we give?
No, they were giving it now.
No, you're giving me permission now.
That's what this is all about.
Okay, good. That's, I just wanna make sure.
Stephen, does that address your concerns about the budget or not?
I mean, I have no idea what this costs. So, it's a big difference when, this is a part, or it's, it's not even a part-time job. We're another bus driver job. I mean, we could be talking seventy thousand dollars, it could be twenty thousand dollars. I mean, it's...
And, and I'm not saying that we just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
That, that I think, going back to what Carol said, is giving Cheryl and Stan the opportunity to go ahead, check it out, see what we got, look at First Student, see what they have, look at all of our options. And in any position added that's an increase in the budget would have to go to finance and would have to come to the full board for approval.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause Stan's always, always put the number out there when creating a new full-time FTE, that's a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, we're not talking about that, but are we talking about?
And we're not talking?
Half of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we could even just be talking about another part-time bus driver, right?
I, I think we just need to see.
Yeah, I agree.
Connie, cause I wanna call, I wanna call for the vote, cause we're getting kinda behind.
I just wanted to tell you that the gentleman didn't call me back today, but I do have one that is a bus driver and a para educator that was interested in coming to Mill River.
Perfect.
Which means the only extra expense would be the bus driver department.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. And yes, for the record. Okay, anybody opposed? All right, we're good. Oh, it looks like Addie's here. Addie. Yeah, Addie, come on up. Let's get ya, let's get ya right here. Get you right at the table.
Hi, Addie.
Hi, Addie.
Hello.
Hi, welcome. And, oh, good, you've got notes. I did look, I tried to look at our bylaws to see what the actual role for the student representative is, and there's really nothing. So, it's, go ahead. You've got notes. We just really wanna hear from you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be given the opportunity to serve your board in the role of student representative. I am passionate about giving back to my school community and helping our school have a positive culture where all students feel supported. I believe sharing my voice as the student representative gives me the opportunity to serve my fellow students and directly communicate needs to you as a board, as well as actively be a part of positive change from Mill River. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself to everyone and share a little bit about the strengths I believe I bring to this position. I have the ability to connect to all grade-level students and give the board an accurate representation of the various perspectives from the student body. I interact daily with varsity athletes, as you can see, I'm in my soccer uniform, student musicians in a variety of music classes that include all high school grade levels, and I'm enrolled in honors and AP core classes at the both sophomore, junior, and senior levels. This gives me the unique opportunity to hear about a broad spectrum of students' experiences, opinions, and ideas about our school in order to give accurate description of the students' needs and hopes to the board. I'm also a student council member, a Trium Honors Music Society member, and a Mill River Leadership Team member. And I recently was also cast in the Mill River student production of Little Women. I have experience as a student leader. I lean into challenges, and I'm confident sharing my voice. Please feel free to reach out to me at any time via my email, and I will very try to respond to you as quickly as I, you, as I can. I can share that at the end if anyone needs it. I wanted to start off by starting, talking about something very exciting for the entire student bodity, body, is homecoming. It's coming up next week, and it's a student-led event. Mill River Music, Trium Music Honors Society has planned all aspects of the dance, myself included, has planned most of the dance itself. Everyone is so excited for homecoming. It is a staple in the community. Every student looks forward to it. And I wanted to start off by talking about how our positive school culture has been created to have everyone experience a great time during this time in the school year. I would like to bring attention to a small thing that has been going on a bit. The lunch has been a bit of an issue, but I'm aware of Dr. Robinson emailing everyone in the community about this issue and us working to make it better. We even had a conversation today at lunch about, he giving me suggestions to lead the student body in talking to the lunch staff directly and bringing positive change to the lunch. I definitely wanted to be a student to lead that in talking to them and hopefully bring more positive change to the lunch, especially with a variety of students with different dietary restrictions. I wanted to share, this is, thank you so much, and I would now like to talk about something that you as a board has directly implemented, the cellphone policy. As the school year has gone on, I have seen many advances in school settings. We're using our Chromebooks and we're talking to find answers instead of just looking it up really quick. And I believe that has, I feel like I've made more friends and we've made a more connected community within my classes, especially with the different grade levels. Most of my classes, I'm the only sophomore. Some of my fellow students have talked to me about the, how they don't love the policy in non-academic times, such as like passing time and lunch, but I don't see too much of a problem with it. I find it almost as a stress reliever, like, I don't have to check my phone. I can just talk to my friends during lunch. I wanted to share that experience with you all, because it is your policy, and I wanted to thank you for your work with that. and I wanted to thank you for your work with that.
Thank you for talking about that.
That is all I have, thank you so much. I'm willing to answer any questions you guys have for me, and thank you for everything.
What role did you land in Little Women?
I'm Amy March, which is Joe's younger sister. She's a bit of a brat, but I hope I can bring that to...
It's called...
How did the game go?
The game went very well. We played one of the best games we've had. It was a tough loss, two, two to one, but this team was undefeated, and we believe it was the first time we, anyone has scored on them. So, we took that very well, and we were very proud of ourselves.
How was the grass?
Very nice.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, go on. Um, Addie, we had a really long conversation about sort of Mill River before you were here. I think a student perspective might be helpful. Do you think the situation with lunch has gotten better this week than in past weeks, or are we still kind of working through it? Not to put you on the, on the spot.
No, not at all.
But to put you on the spot.
I definitely see that this week there have been more options, like, there has been things in each of the sections of lunch, and I've never gone hungry or anything. And I did see, like, I was, I had like a nice sandwich for lunch today, um, and, but, yes. So, I do believe this week after the email was sent out and we were all brought aware to this situation, it has been increasing and it's been going well. But I, and I hope it continues on that trajectory and continues that way.
Um, for folks who, who maybe are a little removed from the high school experience, you know, what do you think is important for someone to know about what it means to be a high schooler at Mill River? You know, kinda what are the big kinda chunks? Just, just for like a, like a basic, you know, one or two really important points that you think folks should know about?
I think folks should know that you really do, should, you really should plan for your future and take the chances that you have in your classes to make friends that really have your back and to work at your schoolwork as much as you can. I know I work very hard in making sure I'm keeping up so I don't have, I try to not have as much stress as I can. And I do think more people should be aware of that, that it can be a hard task to continue to put in the work and keep doing your homework on time, but it's very important that, and you should really try to do that. Another point would be enjoy it. I, I can't believe I'm already a sophomore. I feel like I'm still in eighth grade, um, coming into high school for the first time. Uh, this is my third year on varsity soccer. And I can't believe I only have this year and then two more seasons. I feel like people really try to like get through high school, um, which of course has some validity in going and planning for your future, as I said before, but, and also enjoying it, that you're never gonna be in this position again. There's nothing like high school. And I, my sister is now a sophomore in college, and it's, her experience is incredibly different than her high school experience, and her and her friends have told me to really, the same things I've just said, to really focus on your academics and plan for your future, but also enjoy it and make, spend time with your friends and really just try your best to make memories that you are happy to share in your future.
Okay, well, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay, but you probably wanna go home and make a shower or something. And your mom probably wants to go home. But thank you very much for coming, and we look forward to seeing you. We're gonna expect you the second?
Yes.
Is that what we decided on, the second meeting of the month?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, and if we have any, if anybody has any specific questions that they wanna get student feedback on? I'm sure you mentioned that we, I'm guessing it's A. Simonetti?
Um, it's Addie, so A-D-D-I-E, Simonetti, I've never experienced.
Okay, and that would be her email.
I'm sure he could confirm with you at the end if anyone has any questions.
Well, I would just encourage you to continue bringing this, such well structured, well composed, well written. I'd like to know who your English teacher is, because that was very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm so very excited.
Thanks for stepping up, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So... Phew, okay. So, we're gonna do, we're gonna, next is the Act Seventy-three, and you know, we, um, I, we are running a bit behind schedule, everybody, so, um, I did forward to everybody the survey from the SBA. And I was gonna go through the questions, but I don't think we really have time for that, so hopefully everybody has a chance to look at it. But I do think that the main, um, questions of the survey are, are we doing something? And, um, you know, one of the quest, like, has your school taken, or do you plan to take a formal position on redistricting? I, I think we kinda touched on it on our last meeting, and I think Josh had mentioned, we need to figure out what our priorities are before we can, you know, start to interact with other districts. And how will we, um, how is the school board engaging with the community on this issue? And I think we're gonna have a little report on that when we do the committee, and Sarah's gonna talk about that. And thinking about our current structure of our district, and how do we wanna try and remain a district and then become sort of under a supervisory umbrella? Or do we wanna try and merge with other schools to form a larger school district? And we're gonna look at the map, Cheryl's gonna run us through that. So, and think about what are our challenges and weakness of our current system? What opportunities do we see if we joined into a bigger district? What resources support or policy changes would you need to, to seize those opportunities? What risks or concerns do you see as being a member of a bigger district? And then are there other districts that would make good partners for consolidation? And, and then you can list them and do all that. So, you know, basically, I thought this was a good guide to how we should be thinking about, um, planning for, maybe make, especially public meetings. There's gonna be public hearings, and hopefully some of us are able to go to those and make some comments. And these are the kinds of, um, things that we would be making comments on, I think. So, so with that said, um, maybe Cheryl, if you haven't had a chance to look, how many of you have played around with this little map? Yeah, Rich has, yeah, a couple of you have.
This is what the committee is using to help them in creating, um, boundaries. They did have a meeting September tenth. Um, I did my best to pay attention for as long as I could. It was an all-day meeting, so I was kind of in and out. But, so they're looking at lots of different options, and one of their current options that they were talking about was using the fourteen counties that are already in Vermont as that's how we would break up the districts. And, um, they also, they also looked at, um, one of the other things they're looking at is instead doing the districts or SUs, however they do them, by CTE area, so that, and I, how, uh, I'm not sure how many CTE areas there are, um, but that was something they'll be looking at at the next one. They've also asked, uh, the AOE, they've gotten a ton of information. They're looking at lots of data, they're trying to look at, including like, um, the socioeconomic status of each area so that they can make equitable, um, areas. By and large, it's up in the air, right? Um, I think they're working really hard. I don't see that at this point, at least I didn't feel that there was anything that I felt like they had hit upon that they agreed upon. And I don't want to, in the interest of time, you have this in your materials. I think you could just play around with it, and whoever made this really did a nice job because you really can just add in this group, take out this group, and it gives you all kinds of information to develop a district. Um, I don't know, do you have any questions?
I looked at the, like, when you do it by county, which, you know, makes the, outside of New England, the rest of the country runs local government by, at the county level.
Right.
But, um, if you look at that, you have the Rutland, I think I got a count of about seventy-two thousand students.
Seventy-two hundred.
Was that, seventy-two hundred? I'm sorry, that's, that's exactly what I saw, not seventy-two thousand. And so, I was wondering if there was a discussion of, of, of using kind of the county, but yet having two districts within a county.
I can't say that I paid enough attention to tell you that that did or did not happen. I, I just know that overall they're looking at the counties, and that seventy-two hundred for Rutland County fits right into their forty-eight thousand students. So, if I were a betting woman, I might think that Rutland County might be something because it does seem logical.
I also noticed that the other, uh, four southern counties, I didn't look closely at the rest, I'm sure Chittens many, many times that, but the other four southern, roughly are the, are equal to that.
Right.
Oh, okay.
They're roughly, Wyndham, Bennington, and...
I did hear that there was an issue that they didn't like about, and I can't remember what it is.
Well, you know, the thing with Rutland County is that it goes over to Killington, up to Stockbridge, all the way out to West Haven, up to Orwell, I think it's still in, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, if...
But that's true of, that's true of every county, I mean, it's spread out.
It's true, yeah, it's true, you know, but I mean, like, Killington and Stockbridge, they all kind of are Woodstock. You know, that's where their kids have been going, so I think there's gonna be some historical district lines that are gonna have to be respected, um, in order to, um, yeah.
Yes, their next meeting is September twenty-ninth, and their topic, they're looking at is CTE area-based redistricting ideas. Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
I was wondering about the survey questions. Who's gonna answer them, and what's the timeline?
So, it went to the school board chairs, so that would be me, and they want answers by October sixth.
One more meeting.
We have one more meeting, um, but we were, you know, Sarah's gonna talk about the next community engagement, or, yeah, community conversation is going to be to try and get some input from the community about what...
That's not gonna be till after.
It's gonna be after the sixth, so, um, I mean, it'll be before the sixth, so, you know, we will, will have some input, but it's gonna be in ten minutes, so... Oh, it is gonna be after, cause it's fifteenth, right.
The intent of this survey is to capture the board's input, though, which...
Yeah, I think that...
You know, we can argue whether or not that should represent the constituency, obviously, but...
So, so how about this, if we put it on the next board agenda, it, this is kind of a standing topic at this point, but we, you know, we give it some time, and we kind of look at, or come in with what, what your thoughts are to answer those questions, and...
I think it's probably gonna take a significant amount of time to...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, should we have a special meeting?
Well, let's, when we do agenda building, we'll, we'll talk about that. That way Cheryl can look at what is something that we, or what's on our schedule, because we can definitely, um, work things out. That was a, I let Sean go on, but he, you know, if we don't have public comment, then, you know, we have more time, so...
Actually wrap up before his scheduled time ended, but that was because we had...
Yeah, yeah, we had extra time.
My impression of the survey, and it's just my impression, um, is that they're seeing that lots of different boards or SUs are doing things, and I think they're just trying to capture what you're doing, and so what's happening out, like, in the...
Doing, you know, in terms of organizing and reaching out to...
Reaching out, organizing, because some SUs are organizing.
We've reached, or we have...
Been reached out to.
Been reached out to.
Yes. So, I think that's the purpose of it, they just wanna know what the boards are thinking, or what, yeah.
There was an article in the paper, I, I did download it, but, um, that, um, Slate Valley, right? That's, I'm thinking it's Arsen, but Slate Valley, Fairhaven, that their board, um, they were also reached out to by the Greater Rutland Supervisory Union, and their board said, no, we're not interested.
I saw that in the newspaper, that they declined to be in...
Yeah, so that's what we can talk about, what...
They are one of the larger districts.
Yeah, I'll have to go click on their population.
Slate Valley, I wanna say they're twelve hundred, but I'll look it up while you guys are talking.
So, we'll try and, um, Cheryl and I will get together and we'll try and organize maybe a...
Twelve fifty-six?
Good job. Go ahead.
Has anybody talked about the issue of transportation?
That is one of the things that came up, um, where they talked about patterns of transportation and how, but nothing in depth that I've seen.
I think you got a problem now.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I mean, it's only gonna get worse.
Yeah, um, at the last school board chair forum, um, the school board chair from Grand Isle, I mean, if you think we at least have possibilities, they, I mean, they're up there and, out there, and they have like thirty kids or something.
Where is this?
Grand Isle?
Up north.
Up, way up north, and, um, I mean, their most likely, um, consolidation would be with Burlington, which means their kids will be, for high school, would be on, you know, like an hour, and they have kids going all over, cause they don't have a high school. So, for us, I think the idea of consolidation is a possibility. I don't know what they're gonna do about the Northeast Kingdom. It's, it, you know, that could just end it all, really, so...
So could the islands. I mean, there's just one road to get there, pretty much.
Yep, yep, yep. So, anyway, okay. So, I know that's kinda mushy, but, um, just, we're, we're kinda making progress in thinking about it.
Yeah.
All right, um...
It's just the way it's gonna be.
So, you were saying you two are gonna get together to kinda look at this survey. Thanks for clarifying, too. I didn't know if like their survey was something, like, we were writing something in stone.
No.
So, so that's good to...
Yeah, yeah. It's just, I thought it was good for us, I was trying to think, what are we, what are we supposed to be talking about as a board, and I thought this kinda gave me some direction for...
I mean, I would like to put out that in terms of school districts working together, either Supervisory Union or having a redrawn district lines. I mean, we already have a very strong relationship with Rutland, and we all, we share staff with them, we share, a lot of our kids go to Stafford. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I mean, it's a big transition, but there's a certain organicness to that. I mean, that, those are already, we have a teacher on the board from Rutland, so, that, it's kind of a natural fit in a lot of ways.
Right.
Well, and they have the tech...
Yeah, that's why they have a lot of kids at Stafford, so we're already...
Yeah, if you do all the towns right around us, um, in Rutland County, including Middletown Springs, if you go in and click and include Rutland City and Pitt, Pittsburgh, I didn't do Brandon, but I think I did do Bran- comes to something like four thousand two hundred thirteen students, yeah.
We're right in the ballpark.
We're right in the ballpark, so...
And I would click on things, but I can't see that far to click.
Is the vision...
The problem when we start doing that, then the, the towns that are off to the west don't have a place, you know?
Right.
Which is why when I was doing, I kept looking at...
There's people left out.
I was trying to do this spiral around us, how, how can we go and just keep adding on? But, yeah, we leave out the, the ones on the left that is gonna have to come in, and then we get into the area that you have all astutely, now we gotta travel long distances.
Is the goal to, is the goal to close, to, I mean, obviously it is to save money, make it, you know, all this, more services, you know, bigger centralized stuff, but I mean, is the goal to close every high school in that region, in that new consolidated district? Cause if it is, then busking's gonna be a really huge challenge.
Right.
If it's to close some nine-twelve schools, but keep some on the periphery to consolidate down but not have one massive high school?
Right.
Then that would address some of our challenges, but I don't think we know yet.
We don't.
Because, I mean, that, that's gonna, that's a huge concern.
I say it slightly tongue-in-cheek, they have explicitly stated...
I say it slightly tongue-in-cheek, they have explicitly stated that their goal is not to close schools. Right, but. I don't believe that. No, that's the only way to do it, yeah.
Their goal was to make it so that the school boards have to close schools.
I don't understand where they're going to save them.
But having gone through a merger where this was the, the intent, without closing schools, the intent having been to reduce administrative, we have not seen that effectively land.
When I was at the VSA, they showed statewide budgets and administrative costs were five percent of the budget. So even if we eliminate that, that's not going to.
Not going to save the budget.
Solve the problem, we're going to spend more than five percent on transportation.
If you think about it a minute, Stafford Tech transports kids from all over the county, and they make it work.
Yeah, well, the schools.
So it can be done.
The schools transport, yeah. So, all right, I'm going to move us along. The facilities request, I was kind of, are you on that?
Yes, yeah, I can explain that, too. So I was asked by Tim to bring the wood chip, what is estimate to you? And ask that you, that you recommend that we accept the bid from Following Energy and authorize me, or might designate me, to sign the contract. And so you can see that there are two, well, they reached out to two people. They had one person bid on it, or one company, I should say. And then the second one seemed interested, but then never placed a bid. So he's asking for you to agree that we can sign this contract.
I'll make the motion.
I don't, you know, I don't know that.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Discussion. I don't know that that figure is out of line in any way, but I wish there was more bidders than one.
I agree with you, Dave.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, I think so.
What did we budget?
I believe so, I do not know.
I have bought no small, I mean, not nearly this quantity of wood chips, but at our farm, we've bought wood chips, and that's not a crazy price, especially for what they're doing, you know, screening for size and all these things. But I'd just like to try and continue engaging Mill River Lumber. I mean, not for this year, but for future years.
You mean the guys next door?
Who've they had a little past?
It must be the, it's not the guys next door, it's the.
The new company.
I interpret it to be Mill River Lumber right next door.
Which is right next door, but they don't have.
Well, it's a new owner with a new name, but they're trying to really change how they're doing.
What about the pellet factory across on Seventy?
That's a different company.
It's a different product.
Wood pellets or something like that.
Oh, it's pellets, yeah.
Who've they had last year?
No, these are chips.
What did they pay?
I don't know the difference is, but.
Who did they have last year and what did they pay? So we could compare.
It seemed like they were, the document says they were interested in a conversation, but never provided a bid.
Correct.
And they're really trying to change how they're doing business, they're taking whole trees and turning them into one hundred percent usable products and all kinds of cool things. So I just.
They probably just weren't ready.
I want to engage with them for the following year.
Yeah. So what's the board's pleasure?
I mean, I say that all, while acknowledging I'm going to vote to accept the bid from Following Energy.
I'd like to know what we paid last year and who it was.
Okay, that I can find out for you, but I don't have that.
We don't have it, yeah, we don't have it right now, so I'm going to call the vote, and if you don't want to, go ahead.
When do we need them? Well, this says as of September first through August thirty-first.
We're already well past their deadline to accept the bid, actually.
Yes, I know, I noticed that.
And we need this for this winter.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, pass, and one nay? Nay.
Okay, Dave, I will.
We'll get you that.
I will get you the information you asked. So you wanted to know who we used last year and what the cost was.
I would be curious as to why they didn't bid again, if it's different.
I believe it was the same, but I don't have.
Yeah, I believe it's the same company as well.
If that.
I mean, they've got estimates on how much they expect we're going to use and everything.
Right. Okay, and the second thing is, are we going for the roof? Did he give you that estimate?
No, he did not.
Okay, so that just went out to bid on the roof repair at Shrewsbury. So that, I don't know if that goes through building and grounds, or is that, do you know?
I believe that will go through building and grounds.
Okay, so we'll take care of that, okay.
I'm not sure why he did bring this through me, unless it's been done in the past.
Because it might be in the regular budget, it's not in the building and ground budget.
Okay, that could be.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that, at this point, that we go into executive session. So we're out at nine oh eight, we will be taking action, but not right at this minute. So I don't know legally what that means, but.
Don't you mean to say that we're out of executive session?
I did.
Oh, did you?
Nine oh eight, yep. Got your ears in, okay. So committee reports, personnel, contracts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a couple of contracts, and we didn't have a personnel committee meeting. Obviously, we had it before the last meeting. But these positions are ones that we needed to have filled because, and you'll see as I go through the contract, which is why they didn't go through personnel first. But first one is I'd make a motion to approve a contract for Nicholas Bjorkman, one point oh full-time equivalency, educational support staff.
Okay.
Second. Well, no, because we didn't do it in committee, doesn't that have to be seconded here?
Oh, yeah, we do need a second, go ahead.
Oh, second. Discussion.
No building he'd be in.
Educational support staff can.
District.
District, yeah. All those in favor? Thank you. Next, I'd make a motion that we offer George Smith a contract for bus driver.
Yay.
Approved.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next one, I'd make a motion that we offer a contract to Robert Ballou as van driver. Second. Discussion. I just have a quick question, is he getting, does the van driver get more than the bus driver?
Forty dollars in the wallet, is that right?
I saw that, too, and he doesn't have a CDL, that's surprising to me.
There are benefits and health insurance and dental and paid holidays and stuff for the bus driver.
Okay, so that's why.
Okay. Okay.
All those in favor? Thank you. Last one, I make a motion to offer Colleen Levens a contract as point five full-time equivalency as a third grade teacher, and point five full-time equivalency for a fourth grade long-term cell. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next personnel is, what, October second, first?
I think it's the second.
Somewhere, the beginning of October.
The first, it is the first.
October first at six. Thank you.
Here.
Policy. Okay, we do have a couple of policies to go over. We have a first read for F thirty-two or transgender and gender nonconforming students policy. We have updated our policy to reflect the VSPA recommended one that they had put out as of September, no, as of July, no, sorry. As of August fifteenth. So we have, we want ours to reflect what is most current from recommended by the state with this language. So make a motion to adopt F thirty-two transgender and gender nonconforming students with changes. Thank you, Gray. Second, do we need a second?
I'll second it, I don't think we do because we passed it in committee, right, though?
Discussion.
And is that first read, second read?
First read.
First read, okay.
The main difference that we identified between our current policy and the VSPA recommended policy is in, I had it pulled up, apologies. It's under the use of bathrooms, it's language that they're trying to have, I was going to pull it up for us all. Use of facilities, a transgender student will not be required to use facilities which conflict with the student's gender identity. That is a change in the language. It's trying to not be flagged in a way, but still be able to give districts and respect students' needs.
But another difference is it does not guarantee students access to facilities that do align with their gender identity. So it's, it's not forcing them to use facilities that don't, but it's not necessarily allowing them access to facilities that do, which is the change.
It's leaving, it's trying to be a little bit more vague.
Vague is good.
In this day and age.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? And then we have F thirty, school entry age, we would like to rescind. It is a policy that we have that is not recommended or required by VSPA. It was, we were reviewing it because we hadn't reviewed it since 2016. And after discussion, we thought, is it helpful to at least have it for parents to be able to see what our policy is on it? But because school age entry is by law, and it's clear, we thought it wasn't needed. Anyone like to make a motion to rescind school entry age?
I think you just did.
Oh, I did, I made the motion. Sorry, I'm tired.
And you don't even need a second because it's a thematic committee.
Any discussion, though? We don't need that, okay.
Anybody? No, I think you're good.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Independent to the actual, like, policy, I just want to reiterate to the whole board, I think it would be really valuable for us to look at how we present pathways for families to find information out on these issues. So we no longer have it as a policy, I think we need to proactively put links to state resources that answer the questions the policies once did on our website. So parents who are looking for our policy as a district, there is no policy, so we can direct them to the resources.
That's a good idea. So we have a special committee meeting on September twenty-second at five P.M. that Len and Rich and I are doing for categorizing the policies. All are welcome to that very. Meeting, and then on October fourteenth at six thirty will be our next policy committee meeting.
What was it, ten sixteen, you said?
Uh, yep, no, fourteen, six thirty.
And where's that meeting, here, I'm assuming, yeah?
Yes, it's here. Yeah.
Is, is the October meeting here?
No, it's at Tinmouth.
Oh, that's the Tinmouth one.
The October.
Is that the fourteenth? No, ours is here, it's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. No, I'm talking about the first of October.
No, the fifteenth.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay, so, oh, you meant personnel.
No, I'm thinking personnel, sorry.
No, you're good.
Building and grounds, Josh isn't here, our next meeting is October twenty-seventh, six o'clock.
I don't think we've met since the last meeting ever.
No, we did, we were going to skip a month because they're all set, but then it turned out.
Is it five, is?
I think, I have six to seven here, but I'm thinking we usually meet at five, building and grounds.
I think we're going to want a next meeting.
Double up the finance meeting on that one, too, so.
Oh, okay.
First.
Well, we can decide that at the finance meeting on the sixth.
There's a small update that there's grass growing in the brush area.
Yeah, apparently there's grass.
I can't imagine it's.
I can't imagine it's lush, but, all right. Oh, go ahead.
Just your building and grounds is warrant, gets hours, six P.M., just.
Yeah, it's warned. Community engagement, Sarah, want to talk about?
Yeah, so we met tonight before the board meeting, and we decided on some topics for our future next four community conversations. We have to reach out to the people that are going to do those presentations. We were going to do it for the whole year, but it took too long, so we're, we'll get back to that. So anyway, our next, and our next community engagement, or our next community conversations will be before the board meeting in Tinmouth from six to six forty-five on October fifteenth. Then we'll have a short meeting with any actionable items from six forty-five to seven. And the topic is going to be about Act Seventy-two, and we're going to try to get representatives there from our area, hopefully, actually, Tinmouth, since it's going to be in Tinmouth. And we're going to try to make sure to make engaging postings to bring people in with their questions. And we're going to do a survey about some things they would like to talk about.
Finance, pay orders?
Yeah, pay orders, I'll start with the accounts payable warrants. We have a general fund in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-one and eighteen cents, general fund in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine and twenty-eight cents, food service, four thousand, three hundred fifty-eight and forty-nine cents, and after-school program, three ninety-three and twenty-five cents, for a total of four hundred and twelve, four hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two and twenty cents. We've got student activities from Mill River in the amount of one thirty-six, and from Clarendon in the amount of five fifty-eight and fifty-four cents, for a total of six hundred ninety-four and fifty-four cents. I'll make a motion to accept these accounts payable warrants. Second, second, any discussion? All in favor? Great. And our payroll warrants from September twelfth in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty and fifty-seven cents, and from September sixteenth in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five and ninety-five cents, for a total of six hundred and sixty-one thousand, sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents. I'll make a motion to sign off on these payroll warrants, do we have a second? Second, excellent, any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. We have our next finance meeting.
October sixth.
Is October sixth at, I believe, five P.M. No, when is it? Six P.M.
Six P.M.
October sixth at six P.M.'s our next finance meeting, we're just going to go deeper into the rabbit hole of starting to talk about budget scenarios, the kind of first step to that. We also have another conversation about class funding and putting that to a scholarship fund. That's what's on the topics, those are the topics right now. We will also have two community conversations unscheduled at this moment, but I'm hoping that we can find time in somewhere between the fifth and, the sixth and the seventeenth for two meetings.
October.
In October. We did, last year, we did one of them at three thirty and one of them at six P.M. To have times where folks might be able to come today.
So should that be instead of our regular community conversations or in addition?
It could be either, if it, what do you, what do you think?
I think the redistricting conversation would be good, though, just.
Okay, so we're just in addition.
Yeah, and we're in Tinmouth, so that wouldn't, I think, we have them here usually.
We did them both here in the, in the library. We did them both here in the, in the library.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you, do you need help from me on that, or can you, or you handle?
Just help uh, putting them out when we have dates, getting, getting folks to come.
Okay, so you and I can communicate about that.
Will we call up with those dates at our October first meeting?
Uh, we should get the dates out before that, I think. So I think it's gonna be largely based on when Stan and Cheryl can have time to be here with us.
Okay.
Um, to help with those meetings during probably those two weeks. Cause then we'll probably do another finance meeting at the end of the month, and I'm thinking the twenty-seventh um, before or after the buildings and grounds meeting. So a bunch of finance meetings.
There'll be communication to come between now and the first.
What's that?
There will be communications between now and the first to make that's good.
So you and I'll talk, we'll pick a day and I'll, we'll do postings.
That sounds fine. Um, I believe that's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other legal business? Rich?
Yeah, I wanna hit, given the fact that we begin our meetings saluting the flag and recognize pledging our allegiance to our republic, I wanna uh, just highlight the fact that today is Constitution Day, representing the two hundred and thirty-eighth anniversary of the signing of the uh, constitut, US Constitution and, you know, given the fact that we are a public education institution, we should be concerned, I hope, and I see our missions as we are, that we are raising good citizens. And I think understanding and being aware of the Constitution is a uh, important element in developing citizenship. So I wanted it on record here from the board that we acknowledge this uh, anniversary.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I have another quick item. Um, Karen Standard, our vice principal at the high school, has been working really hard to put together like a, like little food shelf, like non-food essential space in the school, so it's called the Nook. And it's basically ready to go. It's kind of scant at the moment, but we are looking for anyone that wants to volunteer some time, cause basically it's gonna be, it's a room kinda close to the main office, but um, in like the inner part of the school and there's gonna be a volunteer there to help support anyone that needs to come in and get anything they need. So if anyone wants to volunteer, I know we're all background checked, um, you can reach out to Karen about that.
So what's the kind of requirements on volunteering, like time requirements?
It might be like an hour to come, go in and be in the space. Um, it might be going to pick up food from Rutland County Parent-Child Center who we're partnering with. They're, they're helping us with supplies. And um, the Wallingford Rotary is helping with funding and um, getting volunteers together also.
Okay.
And what is this room doing? I didn't quite follow that.
It's essentially like a food shelf space and non-food essentials too. We're hoping to have things like shampoo, deodorant, um, feminine products, like
Gotcha.
Essentials like that that are available to students that could use it. And it's not really intended as like snack grab. It's more intended like students can take some items home.
Right.
Right.
Sounds great.
Who knows?
Yeah. Okay, agenda building.
Can I just back up for a second?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Um, I'll actually, this will go under, let me back up. I have two things. One is the uh, fiftieth anniversary celebration. Um, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting October second at three forty-five. And just to put it out to the public, if they would like to be included in that Zoom meeting, they can email me uh, at my email here for Mill River Unified Union School District or whatever it is. Um, that's on the district website. And that way I can include them in the Zoom meeting.
Can Sean put it out in his newsletter too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, um, that's where we're at at this point. We're gonna have a website, uh, that should be done within the next week or two. Um, and there's gonna be, you'll be able to go on the Mill River website and then go to, there'll be two menus that you can go to, one for former students, one for former staff. And we're hoping to elicit pictures, comments, those kinds of things um, to have on hand. So we're moving forward with it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, we've got some really good ideas and hopefully come June, it'll be a great success.
Yeah, big party. Thank you, Lenny. It will be, for sure. Okay, anybody else? I'm sorry, I'm kinda was like.
Did you say you had two things?
Well, one's agenda building. Sorry.
And did you have something for agenda building?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But we weren't there yet, but.
We are now, go for it.
I, I just, at some point, because I don't think we got to them, I happened to be looking at them the other day. Um, our bylaws were last amended in twenty-four. Now, I know we, at the retreat, we did our goals, but I don't think we got to the bylaws. So, and I'm not saying it has to be on the next agenda, I'm just, we need to think about that.
Well, let's, let's go through, cause we, I think we have a lot for the next agenda, so, and we're gonna be, yeah, so bylaw, review, um, transportation. And what's on our, what's our schedule?
Did you say Act seventy-three update yet?
Yep, we have Act seventy-three. It's almost like
Yep.
set up now, yeah, it's for the rest of our life. So October first, we have um, sports with the athletic director and progress on goals slash Board of Education, Board Education. So we'll look at, we're gonna look at our goals, so we can do like goals, bylaws. Yeah. And um. And bylaws should have been on this one.
This week, yep, this meeting.
Well, good thing it wasn't, cause we had a lot.
Kick the can again.
I didn't burn my sleeping bag.
Yeah, no, I know. And I, I pride myself on getting us out of here, so. Um, okay. Anybody else? Anything for the good? Okay, I think we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.